I'd like to call the order of the Board of Education for the September meeting. I'd ask everyone to stand and join me in the reciting of the National Anthem.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keenan makes that motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Anderson makes a second. All those in favor? Seven oh. Citizens' participation. Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did not have any requests for participation this evening.
Written communications. Dr. Henry.
We did not have any written communications either.
Item number five A, Military Liaison Update. Mr. Bardell.
You know we have to have something, Mr. President. First off, just really like to thank Dr. Henry and his staff for their participation in the quarterly community information forum that we had up on post last week. We appreciated Dr. Henry coming out and talking to our community leaders and families and so forth about the school system and the school district and everything that it provides our children. So we really do appreciate that. On the social side, this Friday, we don't want to conflict with your football, but we do have movies in the park for young families. It's on at 7:30 at Collier Park. And then also, you know, compliments of the school. Also, there's a youth basketball camp that's going to be at Pippen Youth Center on Saturday, 30th of September, starting at 9:00 a.m. And we're using a lot of the coaches from the school will be coming on post to help our kids out, and we really do appreciate that. This year's Oktoberfest will be Saturday, 7 October at 3:00 p.m. That is a family event with a lot of family activities, Volks marches, German food, and the German ban and so forth. And also, Make a Difference Day this year will be 28 October. However, the deadline for those activities in the schools and agencies that would like to submit projects to Army Community Service is 6 October. Last year, we had over 2,100 military and civilian people in the communities participating in Make a Difference Day, and those schools or those that are interested need to contact Rhonda Hutzle at the Fort Leonard Woods Volunteer Coordinator at (573) 596-4334. And, Mr. President, that's all we had. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Five B, District Announcements. Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to say, Mr. Bardell, first of all, we appreciate you having us there. Secondly, we support all events where there's food. So, the running ones...
The looks of it.
So much, yeah, I know. The food stuff's really good. So bratwurst and all that kind of stuff?
Absolutely.
That's great. And we have our Freedom Elementary folks here tonight. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Freedom, for being here. You know, just to say, I know you have underwent a great transition this year, and we really appreciate all that you've done, the patience that you have displayed, the ability to learn new teams, new processes, new norms. I mean, that's a lot for one school year, and we really appreciate all that you've done. So, thank you very much, and we'll be recognizing your CTA Spotlight on Education here in a little bit. So I want to thank everybody for attending Military Appreciation Night. We had a record 220 soldiers from the 787th Military Police Battalion march into Tiger Stadium, and we accepted a guide on from the 787th, so really appreciate that. I also want to thank the 58 golfers and 53 hole sponsors who participated in the Waynesville Career Center's Kerry Payne Scholarship Tournament over the weekend. Tournament raised $6,000, so great job, WCC. While we'll hear more formal reports as construction continues, you will start to notice there are walls going up the middle school and a little skeleton of a building growing out of the ground out there. So Don will be with us to talk about that more later. Also, Homecoming is coming up on September 29th. We will have Homecoming, and we'll have our Community Pride Night, and we will have the crowning of the Homecoming Queen in our football game against the Camden Lakers. The theme for this year in the parade is "Celebrate Our Stripes," showing our tiger pride and also the pride we have for being a military-based school in our country. The district will celebrate its tiger stripes and American stripes, and we'll have several activities here, so I'll kind of read these off. Friday, September 29th, everyone is getting out early. So our 612 students get out at noon. Our elementary students K-5 will be dismissed at 1:00 p.m. 2:30 is the Homecoming Parade, which will start downtown, and we'll go to the slaughter area at the middle school. At 4:30, the Waynesville-St. Robert Chamber of Commerce will also host the Annual Community Pride Night, which is a great event where all of the, many of the businesses in town, the Chamber organizes this, give away a great deal of tiger gear and spirit wear, so it's impossible not to come in already for the football game after that. And I think they give away about 1,500 hot dogs, too. So, there you go. At 6:30 p.m., Homecoming Queen Coronation. 7:00 p.m., we'll have the Homecoming Football Game. Also, there is no school on October 9th for Teacher In-Service Day. In addition, based on parent input, we'll be trying something new this year for parent-teacher conferences. They'll be held from 3:30 to 7:30 on two nights, Tuesday, October 24th, and again on Thursday, October 26th. We hope this allows our working parents more time to meet with their children's teachers. And finally, there'll be no school on Friday, October 27th. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
I know she got the hot dogs in it, though.
Got the hot dogs in there? Just for, yes, for wellness?
Yeah.
Yes.
Item six, Consent Agenda. Dr. Berger, bid recommendations?
Yep, just two, the Piranha ironworker and a generator, and the generator might mention part of our Prop 1 safety money. So we'll put that money into good work, a good use with a generator that will serve central office. And that has actually been kind of tested. We've had some technical, I guess, the technical difficulties recently, so it kind of made us, reminded us how important that generator will be if we get shut down out there to keep student records up and keep payroll going out and things of that nature.
Okay. Six B, Financials.
Yes, the September financial report. MOSIP, $45,392,488. And CDs with Mega Crocker, $10.5 million. General account, $2,622,464. Payroll account, $259,968. Total funds for September, $58,774,920.67.
Thank you, Dr. Berger. Item six C, Study Session Minutes from 8:21 to 17:00. Six D, Regular Session Minutes from 8:21 to 17:00. Closed Session Minutes from 8:21 to 17:00. I need a motion to approve the consent items. Mr. Dearing makes that motion. Mr. Andy makes that second. All those in favor?
All abstained from this vote.
Six oh, one abstention. Mr. Schultz abstains. Number seven C, Spotlight on Education, Freedom, CTA Building Rep.
Gina Brown was selected as our, by our Freedom family, to be the Certified Spotlight Person for September. She's been very flexible with the many changes this year. Ms. Brown is a team player and willing to collaborate with others. She works hard and goes above and beyond what is expected of her. An example is, last year, she did an Iditarod STEM project that the students even wanted to write about. She puts the needs of the students first and can often be found in her room after hours and on weekends. Thank you, Gina, for all your hard work.
Freedom Elementary is very pleased to be able to present Mike Ogden as our classified staff member to be recognized here tonight. Mike was chosen by his peers for this honor. Mike Ogden has been with our school for six years. Mr. Ogden is always willing to help. He is driven to make sure Freedom Elementary succeeds. His positive attitude helps keep all employees smiling. The students who are cafeteria leaders enjoy learning from Mr. Ogden. They look forward to working with him. Everybody at Freedom knows, if you need a job done right, Mr. Ogden is the man for the job.
Thank you. Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. President. Every year, we do a facilities overview. Every other year, we do a facilities overview with also the complete facility plan. This is not the year for the facility plan. That was last year, FY '17, but we're continuing to compile information from that, much of which DHA and Don and his group provide, enrollments, some financial data, also the goals and objectives out of the CSEP plan make the facility plan. So we'll actually start looking at that a little bit, and there are some pretty big decisions to be made, and I'll highlight some of those in the end slides here shortly. But part of our overview, we just take a look at each facility and some highlights of the facility and some recent improvements. But over here in this bottom corner, we're also going to look at our energy incentive. So, that kind of formulated from Mr. Pritchard and I, ran that through advisory, and that morphed into our, asking our buildings just to create an energy committee. We kept the bar kind of low here in year one, and then Mr. Pritchard had a little bit of money, if you remember, in his budget, and he could, if, working with that principal or that energy committee from that school, if there were things that they identified that they thought may be, make an impact, then they could combine their money. The building principal could put their CP money towards that. Mr. Pritchard could put his money towards it, or just the principal, or just Mr. Pritchard. So they just kind of coordinated to do some of those big things. And as you might guess, lighting often comes into those suggestions and make the list for improvement, and then we look to see if that made a difference. And as you can see right here, it made a big difference in the high school, and I can think of the exterior, the parking lot lightings we did into LED probably had a big impact on that. The incentive part of that was, we gave half those funds to the building, and then the district took half those funds. So, I actually, as we closed FY '17, they kind of outperformed my projection because I believe I put $12,000 aside for energy incentive to dole out after we closed the fiscal year, and I still owe the principals about 30% of that. So I was able to pay out about 70% of that, and in January revision, I'll be asking for the additional 30% of that in a budget revision, and we'll give them a little bit more money for down the stretch of the fiscal year. So one thing to know here is security cameras. We're working up some bid, or some proposals to create a bid spec for kind of our first phase for that to come in. Career Center, you know, that's a fairly new building, as you can see, and we haven't done any, you know, vast improvements of recently, but for some of you, the members that have been on the board or some of our community that can remember the Career Center going up, you can kind of go down memory lane and looking at some of these things fairly recently. And again, they didn't have nearly the impact that the high school did, but they did have a positive impact on our, on our energy savings per our plan. Waynesville Middle School, and you know, I actually, you're probably, might be noting from previous years, I've really reduced the number of items I put down here. I just tried to make it the bigger things, but Waynesville Middle School's been around for so long, since 1956, there is a long list of items, but I was very proud to put Waynesville Middle School Phase One construction. It's a 15-month project, as the board is well aware, and one of our pictures, probably a real similar picture because I saw Brian Nash take a similar picture for Don's presentation later, but there's, as Dr. Henry mentioned earlier, you're starting to see some walls go up, and that, actually, from our Wednesday meeting to my drive-by up H-Iway to come to the board meeting, there was already a difference, and there were still pouring concrete at about 4:10 this afternoon. So, there have been 20 to 30 guys on site, was reported at the progress meeting, and if you drive by there, you'll surely see it. Waynesville Sixth Grade Center, again, did a nice job on their incentives, the energy incentive, and again, we're fortunate, new building. We did some small improvements, and understand, the principals have a small CP budget, too, so they can do some things. They're just not really noteworthy, like a massive paving or addition to the building or anything like that. So we kept those smaller things off the list. East Elementary, of course, the big undertaking. Again, Dr. Henry mentioned that earlier, too, the K-5 realignment. So there were some building changes, some building improvements to make those buildings suitable for the student population that occurred this year, and also, they succeeded in seeing some gains on the incentive. So $2,000 back to East Elementary, or at least part of that until January. Freedom Elementary, the K-5 realignment was our big undertaking. Of course, that K-5 realignment didn't detail that out, but there's a lot of small things, playgrounds, improvements come to mind for Freedom Elementary. We had changed some things up. We relocated a piece, a kind of a central piece of playground equipment from on post, one of the post schools, and put it out to Freedom Elementary. And again, energy incentive up here. Pick Elementary bombed the energy incentive, you might look at over here. Of course, that's because we occupied the building. So it was much more efficient when it didn't have any kids in it, but that's okay because I need to tell you at this point, and you see here, we vacated and renamed Pick, of course, but another good thing about the energy incentive was it made us go in and look at how we were being billed from post, and the billing was right. It just wasn't assigned to the right building, so it was several things probably over several years, but certainly the renaming of buildings kind of had our post officials a little bit mixed up. None of our post schools met the energy incentive, but we racked it up to all the confusion in the billing. So as kind of a good effort try, we are going to reward each one of those schools with $500, and all of them made an effort, Pick included. So. Wood Elementary, so we'll ignore the incentive because of the billing issues. We couldn't get that straightened out, but lighting renovation, light renovation in 2015, of course, when we occupied the building, security upgrades, and of course, the maglock entries, and renamed Wood in '15, which we have got circulated through Garrison and every other place we can possibly think of now, hopefully to stay on top of that in the future. So Partridge Elementary, new playground perimeter fence in '15. Those are great schools, or post schools are in good, good order, great condition. Williams Early Childhood Center, one of our, again, one of our newer facilities, and again, actually, Williams, I guess, was the one that we had pretty straightened out because they achieved a $7,000 gain on their energy incentive, so. And then Thayer Elementary realized a slight gain up here on the energy incentive, redesigned, sealed, and painted parking, and actually, we had a small portion of parking that Ms. Justice and the Thayer Elementary had been talking about for a few years, and we're able to budget that this year and had that done over the summer, and it's, looks really good out there and has helped staff, and it's on the backside of the facility. Administration Building, of course, we did those security upgrades, but the new sidewalks in 2015. Maintenance and for this year, last year, we had the concrete floor that we put in in the storage shed back here. That's actually an old picture, but the facility will also get a lean-to that'll go up against where the material storage was, and it'll go the entire length of the building and be real handy to push in our equipment and maintain it a little better. Transportation Department, Phase One renovation, very excited about that, and if you remember, that was all the site work. Phase Two, part of that renovation is slated on the schedule, and in just a moment, we'll brief on that. Sports Complex, repaired our warning track that we were fighting up at the baseball field was really the most recent thing we've done. Great facility. Athletic fields, Tiger Stadium, and this year in particular, we're addressing our track settling, and we'll bring some information to the board, and I'll brief on that again in just a moment. District Security Upgrade, and apologize when that got transferred over to this, it doesn't, I don't know that I can make out that. Let me see if I can get a little closer and not use the microphone, but our, basically, our $233 from Proposition One, that totally blitzed over there, but that $233,000 is in addition to what we already budgeted in previous fiscal years, so that, those are the, the most visible thing that that went to was the security officer that's shared between Freedom and East Elementary, but certainly our communications, the part of the safety was addressed with those Proposition Ones, and part of what would be in a facilities would be some of the security upgrades that'll be realized from that. And then even earlier with the generator that will, that will serve the administration building, all part of those Proposition One funds. This is probably, really, as simple as this is, one of the most important pages of the facility plan, and you see, just, we could go back further, but really, we look at just what was immediately in the past, some of the things that we were able to do in 2017, the things that are, you know, up and on task for 2018 are listed there. Phase One for the Waynesville Middle School is a $20 million project, and so it's obviously taken the majority of our resources, and that being financial resources, but also personnel resources. K-5 realignment was fast and furious, but really, for the most part, we were able to achieve virtually everything over the summer with just a few details to pick up. We've actually got some additional security upgrades with some FOB doors being done is one thing that comes to mind, even after school started, but we've got money budgeted there to kind of field anything that comes up as we, as we work along. Williams, we have the parking expansion slated for this year, and it is in the budget. Again, Early Childhood Special Education Funds are not going to fund capital projects, so that'll be out of district dollars. We're able to get that in the budget this year, and we're kind of, you know, watching these tropical storms and hurricanes that have hit, might be taking oil prices up, so we're kind of watching that to see how our bids might come back because that's a little more sizable project, probably about an $80,000, $100,000 project that'll have a big impact pending the oil prices. So we'll schedule and put that in at the appropriate time when we think we can get the best bang for our buck. Thayer, the parking expansion I just mentioned. Pick, we are, DHA has helped us master plan that. It's really a master plan on the shelf and ready to go at this point. But the questions that'll come up to the board probably as early as the turn of the calendar year, certainly into the spring, is what do we do 2019 through 2023? Just a quick briefing on those projects. Phase Two and Three of Waynesville Middle School, if you'll remember, we initially kind of master planned that middle school out as four phases. Then as we worked through that and kind of took our priorities, we're able to get that down to two and three phases, but really, those are, I would say, soft plans. They will have to be revisited, and, you know, we'll have to look at several things, but potentially make that one additional phase or keep it indeed at two and three. But if you also remember, that requires, the new construction part and academic housing is all accommodated in Phase One. The Phase Two and Phase Three are renovation and demo of a lot of the existing facility. Sixth Grade Center, a cafeteria expansion. We're kind of monitoring that. It's certainly workable the way it is now, but seems like just about any facility you put up, we just can't make the cafeteria or the parking lots big enough. We always come back and relook at that, but that is kind of slated. I would say it's a little softer priority at the moment. FEMA for virtually every facility we have are slated. Some of them are in play. Probably the one that's most notable is Freedom, which we renewed our notice of interest with that, with FEMA for Freedom Elementary. We made the second list in the FEMA, as the way it kind of evolves when they're selecting school districts, but we didn't make the final cut. So, but we did put our notice of interest in again. Phase Two, FEMA Phase Two, which would be a second FEMA structure potentially for East, Partridge FEMA, FEMA's all the way across the line, but then down here for Transportation, Phase Two, which is the facility. So we did all the site work, the parking, the bus, where the buses are parked, is all great, but certainly, the facility is still in need. So those are the things that we'll be looking at in the spring going into fiscal year '19. But what information is forthcoming? What information will the board need? The ASBR, the Annual Secretary Board Report, and the audit. So typically, October, November, you know, we work off a general ledger and the budget, and then by August, middle of August, we close the fiscal year, but the books really aren't nailed down until the audit is complete, and everything in the audit looks great. So I think we're going to have some resources to continue doing projects. It looks very favorable at this point. Again, October, November, we'll be hearing a report from KPM to kind of nail that down. The track remediation, we have this continuing track settling. We've asked SCI to come in and do various borings, and then Burns &amp; Jones has thrown us some numbers. We actually received that report Friday. We'll be packaging that together for a board report in the near future and put a price tag on what we believe that'll be and hopefully resolve that issue. I think we have had, I think, three issues. I'm kind of looking for Kevin. I didn't see him earlier, but three issues of track settling out there. I know the board's fully aware of that, but that's an issue we need to get resolved. Freedom in East Capacity, so as reported in Board Retreat, we saw something different this last year where we saw the enrollment of the school district in its entirety actually continue to go down as we'd seen in the preceding years, but what was a little different was East and Freedom stayed pretty stable. And so that could create some new problems for us or some new challenges moving into the future. So what that will prompt is a topographic survey and site study of our T-HIway property, and we just need to get plans kind of forwarded on that. Not, you know, we're not go yet, and certainly, the board will make all the decisions on that planning, but those are things that we would like to have in a little more advanced state, so if that does blindside us, we're that much quicker to being able to address those needs. Waynesville Middle School, Phase Two Planning, I spoke of that earlier, and I also spoke of the Transportation Facility, Phase Two, and again, that's the actual facility, but we've done great, great groundwork, a million dollars worth of improvements to the site work, and all that that we did in Phase One in Transportation will be a great bargain when we do, are able to schedule the facility because we front-loaded a lot of that work, and it just gets more expensive every year that passes by. So that's the forthcoming information. A lot of decisions to be made, so we can make this column 2019 because I'm going to need a lot of board up, a lot of board input to decide what gets advanced over here to the 19 column. Questions from the board?
Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good report. Item eight B, Williams Early Childhood Program. Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you. You'll have to excuse me. I'm fighting this sinus thing that everybody else is fighting. So here's our little report on Williams Early Childhood Center. Give you an overview. We service children who are three to five years of age. We have our PACE program, which is our regular preschool program, and we have our Early Childhood Special Education program. These are children who are identified as a child with a disability. We have eight of those ECSE classrooms at Williams. Some of the questions that come up when parents come in, we do have our service providers in-house, so we have two SLPs, one SLP-A, a teletherapy SLP, a physical therapist, occupational therapist. We also have access to a visual impairment instructor and a deaf educator. So families are really pleased when they move into this area, and they see that we do provide these services in-house. Our admission process is a little bit different. We're not open enrollment like other buildings in the district. Each child that comes in will participate in the dial screening, and then if concerns are noted, the parent can then refer the child for additional testing, and this would begin the special education process. Then students are ranked from the lowest score on the dial to the highest score. in the district. Each child that comes in will participate in the dial screening, and then if concerns are noted, the parent can then refer the child for additional testing, and this would begin the special education process. Then students are ranked from the lowest score on the dial to the highest score on the dial, and this enables us to reach the kids that have the greatest need. Students may also transfer in to our building if they have an evaluation from another district. We also participate in Child Find, that's really important. We do monthly dial screenings at Williams, and then each Wednesday, any parent that calls that has a concern, we do a screening right then on those Wednesdays. And then also, parents as teachers is a really integral part of our team. They're out in the community, they do a lot of community outreach programs, they work with the military, they work with the CDC, and they're out there finding families and trying to get them resources. So enrollment, right now, PACE maintains approximately 144 students. We have 4-year-old classes that have 15 students in the morning and then 15 students in the afternoon. We also have one 3-year-old class that has 12 students in the morning and 12 students in the afternoon. ECSE will have approximately 180 students by the end of the year. Right now, we're running about 130 ECSE students. The reason why ECSE fluctuates is because as a child turns 3, they're eligible for our program. So we work closely with the First Steps program, we have to have those assessments in place by their third birthday. And then parents as teachers, they service 80 to 85 families, which translates into 90 to 100 students. And a question that's always asked is about our waiting list, and we do have a waiting list. And so right now, in our 4-year-old, for our 4-year-old classes, there are nine students on the waiting list, but for our 3-year-old class, we have 96 students on the waiting list. Now, those 3-year-olds will roll up, and those will become our 4-year-old students the following year, but for right now, we do have 96 students on our 3-year-old list. Data, you know, we're data-driven, just like every other building in the district. So we look at, we look at all of our, this is math, and we look at our areas that are a little bit lower. We did notice that our number identification, and surprisingly, this year, our rope counting is lower. So you'll see those are reflected in our SMART goals coming up. And English Language Arts, one thing that we implemented this, or last year, we implemented visual phonics. And visual phonics is kind of a whole-brain approach to learning letters and letter sounds, and that enabled us to move our letter identification data all the way up to 86% proficiency. Now, I think it's important to, when you look at our data, remember, we're a needs-based preschool, and we have more special education students than we do regular education students in our building. And so we're really proud of our data when we can hit those proficiency levels of 80%. SMART goals, we listen, the district would really like to boost their Algebra I scores. Well, it starts with us because we're the foundation. And so our SMART goals this year are going to go around math. We believe that when we talk about rigor, that doesn't mean teaching more, that means teaching deeper. So when kids go to kindergarten, they'll have a firm foundation on rope counting, one-to-one counting, and then number identification. And of course, we can't leave off letter identification. We had an 86% proficiency level last year, and we're going to maintain that for this year. Our curriculum, we did implement a new curriculum this year, the Emergent Language and Literacy Curriculum. Each unit is a two-week unit that focuses on a particular subject. In the month of August, the unit was same, different, and feelings. I've got a couple of pictures to share with you from that unit. It was a very powerful unit that really talked about diversity, not only in individuals, but in families. And so the units develop activities for the students to learn through exploration and play. There's circle time, phonological awareness groups, centers, dramatic play, math and science, construction, tactile, creative book, art, technology, and literacy. And there's also shared storybook, and this really deepens their understanding of early literacy skills. So I want to share with you a couple of pictures. These are from Mrs. Parker's group, and this is from our diversity unit, same, different, and feelings. We're the same and we're different, and our world is a rainbow. And I thought that was really powerful. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell, really good report. Item 8C, Waynesville Middle School Update, Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Don Hussman from DHA is here to show us some pictures.
Good evening. As been mentioned earlier this evening, we have, or we're beginning to see a lot of progress over there now. For, when you start a building, it seems like it takes forever to get out of the ground. Well, we're pretty much out of the ground with the exception of just one of the areas of the middle school, it's the Area A that is really just west, immediately west of the 6th Grade Center. But these images, they're all dated from last Wednesday, our representative was onsite, Brian Nash was here last Wednesday, and had photographed a number of these images for your viewing pleasure this evening. And again, we're really beginning to show quite a bit of construction. The masonry walls that are going up right now, for the most part, are the firewalls that actually separate the building into fire zones, and that's always very important. But the other element of those walls is that they begin to set the elevations for the structural steel, and a few slides from now, we'll see some of that structural steel in place. This is the elevator tower that's under construction, the elevator portion of that image is right here, the openings, the openings are a little difficult to see, but they're stacking one upon the other. And to the left of that elevator opening is a stair enclosure. So that's moving along quite well. This is kind of a portion of the conduits that are coming in from the site, coming into the building. You see the conduits that will sit on the exterior portion of the building, and then they go under the foundation, and they're beginning to poke up right here. So that's very important, that the utilities are all now finally getting into place. And again, is, a lot of the things that are underground, like undergrounds, utilities, plumbing and the like, really take a lot of time to place and to plan and get it right exactly in the correct place, so that as the building walls go up, everything begins to fit together. Another image of one of those really massive firewalls, that opening that's right here is not a window, and it's actually a doorway that will be on the second floor. So that gives you a little bit of a magnitude. Those walls seem very thin, and they are. In some cases, they're only 8 inches thick, some of those walls are 12 inches thick, but they do a tremendous job as a solid, essentially concrete element to separate the building fire separations. That's a view from probably a little bit further back in the site, and shows a little bit more of a panoramic view of activities. When I was onsite this evening, that great big mound of, it's actually that crushed stone portion has all been leveled now, and they're actually starting the foundations and the building pad for that portion of the building that we call Section A. The last time I was here, we talked a little bit about the construction of a concrete head wall that's out into Mitchell Creek. This was actually redesigned, if you recall, it was redesigned by our civil engineer after those tremendous rains that we had earlier this year. And that head wall, or that portion of the concrete wall, will really stabilize the bank area. And then, if you recall, we talked about how larger rock, it's called riprap, will actually be placed adjacent on both sides of that for quite a distance in Mitchell Creek, and that will help stabilize the bank from eroding. But that is all in place now, and there's a little bit of excavation out in the actual creek bed that will need to happen. This is one of the stairs on the east side of the building, it's just beginning to form. It's actually a very wide stair, you'll see a small portion where the concrete portion has been already placed as a component of the foundation. And then, from this level, which is actually the main floor level, from that portion going up, those will be steel stairs, much like are in the 6th Grade Center or this building, too. And I think the last image here actually shows some of the steel structure that is now being shipped to the site, those are the great big beams, there are a lot of columns that are now on site. Just since Wednesday, when we were here last, there's a tremendous amount of steel that has been shipped to the site, and once that steel starts going up, I think you'll really, really see the shape of the building coming together. There is still portions of the floor that need to be poured, they're currently working in the kitchen area and such, which is very intense, as you might guess, with underground plumbing. I think that is the last image, that's correct, it is. Could I answer any questions with regard to progress or anything that's coming up?
Mr. President, I might mention a couple numbers that I think everybody can kind of be familiar with. It is 31% of schedule, and it's still, you know, relatively early juncture, but only 13 weather days at this point. So, you know, we've had some weather, but really, the project is moving along, we're pleased with it, so, all positive.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Action Items, 9A, Proposed Revision to the 2017-18 Staffing Plan, Mrs. Bales.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration is recommending, in addition to this 2017-2018 staffing plan, one full-time kindergarten teacher at Wood Elementary School.
Have a motion to approve that recommendation. Mr. Anderson makes that motion. Mr. Keeling seconds it, all in favor. 7-0, Megan. 9B, Administrative Contract Late Resignation Clause, Mrs. Bales.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration recommends approval of the administrative contracts resignation clause as presented.
May I have a motion to support the recommendation? Mr. Schultz make that motion. May I have a second? Mr. Anderson seconds it. All those in favor. 7-0, Megan. 9C, Eligibility Proposal for 8th and 9th Grade Students Participating in Misha Activities, Mrs. Bales.
Thank you, Mr. President. The administration requests approval to adopt Misha eligibility requirements for students moving from 8th to 9th grade to take effect in January 2018.
All right, I need a motion to approve that. Mr. Dr. Fulmer makes that motion, do I have a second? Mr. Keeling seconds it, all those in favor. All those opposed. 5-2, Megan. 9D, Remind App Pilot, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we look at our communication plan for our teachers and reaching our public, we were looking at different avenues for that, and we did find that Remind, which allows teachers to contact parents via an app or texting, is used widely. And Remind is used across the nation by many districts. They are rolling out a district-level app this year, which allows districts to have the ability to see the messages that are being sent, it archives messages permanently, and allows us to look at our level of communication with parents and families. And so we are requesting approval of a pilot this year at our secondary level of the Remind app, and then we'll use that information in future years to make decisions about our other levels.
All right, I need a motion for approval of that recommendation. Mr. Anderson makes that motion. Mr. Quinn seconds it, all those in favor. 7-0, 9E, Curriculum Material, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. The administration recommends approval of the curriculum items as presented. This includes textbooks for our new Advanced Placement French course and our new Advanced Placement Physics course, and this would provide textbooks for each student in those courses, as well as access to the online materials. And then also, we have had in the district, the Step Up to Writing Program, which we've used successfully. Our materials are one of their previous series, they're from 2008. So requesting approval to purchase the newer Step Up to Writing materials with a copyright date of 2016, so we can use those at the elementary and secondary level to support the writing process.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
No moves.
Dr. Fulmer?
I would just make a comment on the Step Up to Writing. I remember that program fondly. It did a tremendous job with our teachers, giving them a comfort zone in teaching the writing process, and we could really see improvement. I'm happy to see us updating that material.
Dr. Fulmer's made that motion, do I have a second? Mr. Schultz makes the second, all those in favor of the motion. 7-0, Megan. We have a need to enter into closed session, closed session record, closed vote, followed by RSMO 610.02, Section 3, Hiring, Firing, and Disciplining or Promotion of Employees, and Section 13, Individual Personnel Records, Performance Ratings. May I have a motion to enter in closed session, I need a roll call vote. Mr. Keeling?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
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 Yes. 7-0, Megan. We are adjourned.